Ms. Garrison, would you do the invocation, please?
Am I unmuted?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Oh, give thanks. This is Psalm 105. One through seven. Oh, give thanks unto the Lord. Call upon his name. Make known his deeds among the peoples. Sing unto him, sing praises unto him. Proclaim all his wondrous works. Glory in his holy name. Let the heart rejoice for those who seek the Lord. Seek the Lord and his strength. Seek his presence continuously. Remember his marvelous works that he has done. His wonders and the judgments from his mouth. Oh, offspring of Abraham, his servant, oh, children of Jacob, his chosen ones. He is the Lord our God. His judgments are in all the earth. Dear Father, your word is a blessing to us as long as we follow it. You reward us for our obedience, and we sing praises to you for our rewards. You grant favor to the righteous and provide mercy to those in need. Father, we thank you for giving strength and courage to those who dare to serve, for it is not an easy position. And our leaders' choices may not always be to the liking of everyone. Let their position be one whereby they have called on you first. Then guide them along the path as they make critical decisions based on their research and their trust in you. They may not always understand your ways, but their trust in you will give them the right results for the citizens of Glen Arden. You have told us that you're doing a new thing in our city, so we're standing on that word. Thank you, Lord, and continue to watch over us all. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Garrison. We appreciate that word of prayer over this city, Glen Arden. All right. Now, we'll move to the roll call. Councilwoman Eason?
Present.
Councilman Herring?
Here.
Councilwoman Smallwood?
Present.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Here.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Here.
And Councilwoman Jones is present. That's seven in attendance. All right. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Thank you, Councilwoman Eason. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ferguson. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam President.
Councilman Herring?
Yes, I'd like to ask that we move Congressman Brown's presentation after, as the first order of business, so that he can go ahead and do his presentations. I have to sit through all the rest of this stuff.
His presentation is right in order of, after the minutes, after adopting the minutes. It shouldn't take long.
Well, I'm asking it to go before the minutes.
I don't understand the need to do that, Councilman Herring. The minutes, it shouldn't take but a few minutes to adopt. And then, right after that, is his presentation.
It's not, it's gonna take more than a few minutes, so.
Ms. Jones?
Councilwoman.
I concur with Mr. Herring to move Congressman Brown's presentation before the minutes.
All right, we'll take a consensus of the council. All right, so Councilman Herring, you say you're making a motion to move this, or we just can take consensus?
You can just take a consensus. We haven't adopted the agenda yet, so I'm just asking that it be moved.
All right. Councilwoman Eason?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smallwood?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Jones? I'll agree to it. Just a second. Census to. Good afternoon, Congressman Brown. How are you doing? It's good to see you.
Point of order. I'm sorry.
Am I up?
Just a moment, Councilman, Councilmember. Congressman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Eason?
Yeah, sorry, Congressman Brown. Ms. Jones, we have to actually vote on the agenda. We just took a consensus to change the order of the agenda, but we have to vote on the agenda to accept it.
All right.
Council President, I have a question about the agenda.
Councilwoman Smallwood?
I'm trying to figure out, why do we have the resolution R forty-five twenty twenty-one coming under June legislation, when that was in the work, that was at the work session to come to the floor to be voted on tonight?
Due to the fact that the council will be seating a new council, I think it would be their responsibility to determine whether they want to do, to be involved in the decision-making for the July-August recess.
Everything that has a everything that has a number is supposed to come to the floor tonight, so I don't understand.
That's not true. I've seen things come to the floor that have a number because of different issues with it not come to the floor the same, that after the work session. Past practice has, past practice for the legislation for recess has always been that the incoming council.
That's not true.
It's not true, Madam President.
Any other council members want to weigh in on this?
Madam President, I agree with Councilwoman Smallwood. That's not true what you said. If the incoming council chooses to have work sessions, they can choose to have work sessions at any meetings they want to. This is just allowed for them to have a recess if they choose to have a recess. And then, the rule says that at any time, a meeting can be called during that recess if we have to address business at hand.
But considering that it's the new council, the new sitting council that's coming in, why wouldn't it be their decision to decide whether they want recess or not?
The same way, when you came in, it wasn't your decision. We voted on, we voted for recess before you guys went in.
No, we voted for recess after. It was
No, we did not.
Because, I'm sorry, but the June meeting will not have the new council do business until after they're seated.
Madam President, since you brought it up, it is now old business. You brought it up, you brought it up for a vote on, at the work session last week, so now it is considered old business, so we can move on. I don't want to hold up the congressman's time.
Thank you. Any other issues concerning the agenda?
Oh, no, because I'm not clear, for clarity, what are we doing with this R forty-five?
R forty-five can come up in the June business.
That's wrong, you know that.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Smallwood. We will now vote for the agenda. The motion was done by Councilwoman Eason. It was seconded by Councilwoman Ferguson. Councilwoman Eason, for the agenda.
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
No.
Councilwoman Smallwood?
No.
Councilman Williams? Councilman Williams?
Yes.
For the agenda?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wilson?
No.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones, yes. Four yeses, the agenda passes. Now, I'm sorry, Congressman Brown is coming to do a presentation concerning the American Rescue Act. Congressman Brown?
Well, first of all, thank you and good evening, Council President Jones, and to all the members of the council on the city of Glen Arden. Thank you very much for your service. Also want to thank your staff, who no doubt supports you and the residents of Glen Arden in an extraordinary way. Just for the record, let me say I've never been the subject of debate on a municipal agenda. And also, for the record, I was more than happy to wait my turn, although I do appreciate you moving me up, because I always like to see, you know, municipal governance in action. I mean, what you all do, where you have so many competing responsibilities in your lives. For some, you've got, you know, an employment outside of the home, taking care of family, and then your service to Glen Arden. I applaud you, I thank you for that. It's great to be here this evening in Glen Arden. I wish it could be in person, and I look forward to the day that we get back to in-person events, and I'm sure with the vaccine on the horizon or here, and almost in everybody's arms, we'll get there soon enough. Nearly two months ago, as you know, Congress passed the American Rescue Plan to really provide a lifeline to families and our communities, small businesses. And since its passage, we've significantly bolstered our vaccination efforts. Hundred and five million Americans are fully vaccinated. More than fifty percent of adults have received at least one shot. My focus, and I know the focus of the Biden administration, is while speed is important, equity is equally important. Make sure that it's getting into the arms of every community, of every member of every community. After exceeding his previous benchmarks, President Biden set an ambitious goal to have at least seventy percent of adults partially vaccinated by July fourth. And we're on our way to meeting that goal. As we continue our work to defeat this pandemic, we know that our economic recovery begins in our towns and our cities, which have been, you have been on the front lines of our efforts against this virus. And we know that you're in need of additional federal assistance. This once-in-a-generation pandemic, and let's hope that's the case, let's prepare for it, has asked states and towns to provide more public services and more assistance to meet the needs of our residents. The work of local public servants like you has been critical to saving lives and providing a safety net, and that's why, from the outset of the pandemic, Congress has fought for more assistance for local government. And finally, we've delivered. A core pillar of the American Rescue Plan is significant support and funding for states, counties, and localities. The American Rescue Plan includes three hundred and sixty billion dollars to help states and local government continue to serve residents. This funding can and will be used to protect the jobs of first responders, public health workers, teachers, transit workers, and other essential workers. I think last week, but yet it didn't happen, but soon, the implementation guidelines and more directions will be made available, and specific amounts of that funding will be made available. It can be used in a broad number of ways, and that guidance will come out. It can be used to address the COVID-nineteen pandemic's economic impact with aid to households, small businesses, and nonprofits. States and towns and cities can also make investments in infrastructure that will help you and our country truly build back better. And you can use the money also to reinstate any government services that have been affected by revenue reductions, lost revenues during the pandemic. The funding in this bill is significant, and we have to ensure that we use it wisely and strategically, that we're open and transparent as we invest in our communities. So I'm joining you this evening to present a symbolic check to the city of Glen Arden for approximately five point one three million dollars. Funding that I know you will put to good use in our communities. The American Rescue Plan is just the beginning of our efforts. We have more work ahead of us to crush this pandemic, get families and communities back on their feet and build back better. And I look forward to working alongside you in our efforts to do that. So congratulations on this American Rescue Plan appropriation. And I wish you the very best, and I want to be of assistance to you as you deploy those resources into and for the community.
All right, thank you, sir. We appreciate you.
Okay, take care now.
You too. Have a good evening.
All right.
All right, I would ask everyone to mute themselves. I hear background noise. If you have background noise, please mute yourself. Thank you. All right, so we'll move on in the, with the agenda. The next item on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes. Those minutes being March tenth, twenty twenty-one, a special regular meeting. March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, a special work session. The meeting was canceled. March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, an executive session closed. That meeting was canceled. March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, a special work session. That meeting was canceled. March twenty-ninth, a special work session. March twenty-ninth, an executive close session. March twenty-ninth, a special work session. April fifth, twenty twenty-one, a special public hearing. April fifth, twenty twenty-one, a work session. April twelfth, twenty twenty-one, a regular meeting. April twentieth, twenty twenty-one, a public hearing. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes?
Madam President, I move that the minutes be adopted.
Thank you, Councilman Williams. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ferguson. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. On the minutes you have, on March twenty-ninth, you have a special work session, executive session, and a special work session. At the second special work session, action was taken by way of a vote. I'll try to say it's no votes can be taken in a work session. Only any irregular meeting or special meeting.
I think that was a special regular meeting after the close meeting that may be labeled wrong by the former council clerk.
I checked the agenda that was voted on was an agenda for a work session.
Mr. Herring, the only thing with that is that was supposed to be a special regular meeting after following a virtual meeting following a closed meeting. It may have been labeled wrong. That might have been my error, and I'll take the the blame for that. But that was a special regular, that should have been a special regular meeting following the closed meeting.
Well, what it should have been and what it actually was is two different things. That makes a big difference in the action that we took. Because we should not have taken the action that we took should not have been taken in that work session.
That was not a work session. It was supposed to be a special regular meeting after the closed meeting. It may have been labeled wrong.
What it's supposed to be and what was voted on was a work session. So I'm just making a point of that.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Excuse me. There are errors, there are errors in the minutes, so I think that they need to be looked at again. There are quite a few, and there were, the errors have to do with what people said, and it was conveyed differently. So I suggest that we not vote on the minutes at this time.
Madam President.
I'm sorry, Councilman Williams, just a second. Those minutes were taken using the recording from the Zoom meeting that was done. I don't understand, like I said, if there were errors, Councilwoman Wilson, when the minutes were given to you in the work session to go over, then I ask that person, if you had any issues or questions, to please bring those so that we can discuss them. But all of the minutes that were taken, most of them, except for the one by the council clerk, she used a recording. But the minutes that were taken were minutes used by the the Zoom recording, so I don't understand how anything could have been misconstrued.
I don't know how it was done either, Madam President, but it was done.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wilson. Councilman Williams?
Madam President, to avoid controversy, I make a motion that we table the minutes to be re-presented after thorough going over and getting back to you by certain said day by certain, by council members. So by, say, two weeks or whatever, then by the next meeting to be able to be approved.
Second.
I'm sorry, Councilman Herring, you said that was a second?
Yes.
All right. Councilwoman Eason?
Yes, to table the minutes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smallwood?
Are we tabling all the minutes or just the minutes with the corrections?
All of the minutes.
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Jones? No. That's six yeses and one no. So now we'll move into the May legislative. All right, the first piece of legislation for May is an emergency ordinance to amend the FY twenty twenty-one budget to redirect monies from the general fund to the administration category at the election board expense line of the budget in order to pay for the cost of the runoff election for mayor necessitated by the results of the May third, twenty twenty-one election for mayor. Okay. I'm sorry, okay. Whereas the city of Glen Arden, Maryland, hereafter, the city is a municipality organized under the authority of Article eleven E of the Maryland Constitution and is defined by the Maryland Code, Local Government, Article, Section one dash one oh one G. And whereas pursuant to Maryland Code, Local Government, Article, Section five dash two oh two, the city may adopt ordinances to, one, assure the good government of the municipality, and, two, protect and preserve the municipality's rights, property, and privileges. Whereas pursuant to Charter, Section six oh two twenty-one of the Charter, the City Council of Glen Arden, hereafter the council, has the express power to expend municipal funds for any public purpose and have general management and control of the finances of the city. And whereas Charter, Section three oh eight C and E respectively, provide, one, that an emergency ordinance may be adopted at the same meeting it is introduced and may be effective on a date certain. And whereas, an election for the office of mayor was held on May third, twenty twenty-one, which election resulted in no one of the five candidates running for office of mayor receiving a majority of the votes cast for mayor. And whereas Charter, Section seven ten B, requires that there be a special election between the two candidates receiving the highest number of votes for mayor. And whereas Charter, Section seven oh nine B, requires that the aforementioned special election must occur no later than June second, twenty twenty-one, which deadline necessitates an expedient provision of the resources necessary to hold the election. And whereas the funds allocated in the FY twenty twenty-one budget for the election board expenses under the administration's category are insufficient to provide for the expense of the required special election. And whereas there exist funds in the general fund sufficient to provide for the expenses of the required special election. And whereas Charter, Section eight oh eight D, the council may, by ordinance, adopt by the affirmative vote of at least two-thirds of the entire council, transfer part of, part or all of any unencumbered appropriation balance from one expenditure classification to another. Now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the City Council of Glen Arden, sitting in a regular session this tenth day of May, that pursuant to the emergency ordinance funds in the amount are hereby transferred from the general fund to the administration's expenditures category, and specifically to the election board expense line. And be it further resolved and ordained by the City Council of Glen Arden that this emergency ordinance is and shall be effective upon the same date as passaged. Is there a motion to accept this emergency ordinance oh seven, twenty twenty-one?
I have a question.
Councilman Williams?
All right. And this is in reference to our, so the attorney is here, so I want to, I want to see how we want to deal with this. We have a law that states that all legislation has to go through public hearing. This, this piece of legislation has not been to a public hearing. And council members cried, rightfully so, about previous legislations that come before us that didn't have a public hearing. We have a dilemma, because our charter always says that you got to have something done in thirty days. And if this doesn't happen, then you're going to break the charter that way. So I want to hear the attorney's opinion, his legal opinion, on the quagmire we are in, that it appears in this, we do some other things, having a public hearing this weekend. How are we going to get past not having a public hearing and have this vote today on this legislation?
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. I, I think the council can pass it as an emergency ordinance. It's going to require a supermajority to do so, but I don't think you have much of a choice. The money needs to be moved to the Board of Election line item in order for the special election to be held in order to fill the seat, the mayoral seat. So I, obviously, the council needs to discuss how much money needs to be transferred and what kind of election is going to be held for the runoff. But given my view that a runoff is required under the charter, given the language of Section seven ten B of the Charter, I think the council needs to vote to go ahead and move that money in order to be able to fund the special election.
Madam President, can I respond?
Councilman Williams?
All right, and you make a point, Mr. Carpenter. But you didn't address the other part of the charter that says that all legislation has to be go before a public hearing. that all legislation has to be, go before a public hearing. And that's part of the charge, too.
I don't believe emergency legislation necessarily has to. It can be passed at the same meeting that it's been introduced, which is now.
I mean, is, you're saying you don't believe. I'm asking for a legal. Legal, we have a law that says all legislation, all, then says exception from emergency. It says all legislation has to be, go before a public hearing.
Emergency legislation can be introduced and passed at the same meeting as long as it's done by a vote of, of five members.
So you're saying state law supersedes our charter?
I believe the charter also provides that as an emergency act.
I don't read that in the charter, but we can agree to disagree. All right, thank you, ma'am.
And as for reference, I think when we had to make a decision concerning the election, we did do an emergency ordinance so that that issue could be resolved.
But that was dealing in reference pandemic, under the governor's order suspending because of pand, charters from the pandemic. But I'm not here to debate it. I, I wanted to hear the, the legal opinion. And, and whether I heard it right or not, I heard that opinion.
Madam President?
Councilman Herring?
On this piece of legislation, I would like to add procedures for recount on this piece of legislation. It's ordinance coming up that we can pass by ordinance, legislation for recount. And I would like to add that to it. I've sent that legislation out to everyone, amending it to add for recount and add the procedures for recount. So I'd like to have that added to this. I had this piece of legislation amended to add that to it.
Yeah, I'm going to ask the attorney to weigh in on that.
My, my advice, my recommendation and opinion is no different than when I was asked whether the, the typical procedure could be altered to go ahead and allow write-in candidates. And my opinion then was, and still is, that the Governor's Proclamation 20-03-30-03 addresses two things. It addresses the date on which elections can be held and it elect, and it allows a municipality the flexibility to determine the method by which they would allow voting. Many jurisdictions don't allow, for example, for no excuse absentee voting. Many jurisdictions did not have vote-by-mail voting. Those, those kinds of procedures are intended to address the health, welfare, and safety issues addressed by the Governor's proclamation. I do not believe write-ins do. I don't believe recounts do. I am a believer, and I have said this to the Board of Elections as well as the council president, that the city of Glen Arden's procedures for elections need to be totally revamped for the next election cycle. But I do not believe a recount or write-ins would fall within what is contemplated by the Governor's proclamation.
Well, I guess my feeling is it just doesn't fall under Governor's proclamation. It's just putting procedures in place for recount. Neither does this emergency ordinance fall under the Governor's proclamation. We would have to do whether the governor had a proclamation or not. We would have to expend money for a special election. So I like to have it added, but they don't want to add it, and I won't support it, so.
Well, I, I guess my point is if you were to go, have it go through the public hearing process that you normally would have, then I don't believe that there's sufficient time that it would make a difference for the runoff.
Yeah, that's a council decision. They, they make the decision on their own, so. All right, all right, I'm asking at it. That's, depends on what the will of the council is. All right, thank you.
Any other questions concerning the ordinance?
Council President, I got a question regarding this ordinance. On line 12 on the second page, you got a blank, like we're going to give them a blank check to go out and spend whatever money they need to spend for this, for this runoff?
Is that your, is that your question?
Yes. While we give them, while we leave this money dollar, dollar line blank.
I, I intend to get the dollar, dollar figure and fill that blank in before this is passed. Mr. Kupinski, you were going to say?
I was just going to say, I mean, that's, that is going to be something, obviously, that the council has to decide what type of election the council would like to have for the runoff. Because that obviously will dictate how much money it needs to be appropriated. And I, I don't know if the Board of Elections, I believe the Board of Elections members are on, and I believe Mr. George is on the, in the, on the meeting as well to be able to address some of those costs, depending upon what type of election is held.
So do I need to take a consensus from the council to find out what type of election needs to be held?
Well, I, I would recommend that you, you get someone, either Mr. George or the Board of Elections, provide the council the, the cost estimates for having various types of elections held.
All right. Mr. George, would you, if you have that information, would you provide that to the council, please, and the citizens?
Well, I have, what I'll do is I'll just intro it, and then Mr. Beckles has the numbers. So we're really looking at two different types of elections. One is very much what we just did for the general election, where you would have a mail-in component with ballots mailed to all the registered voters. You would have the drop box, and you would have in-person on the day of the election. The other option would just simply be in-person only. So you would not have the mail-in component. And those are two very different costs. And Mr. Beckles got the most recent quote from the elected vendor and can speak to those two different costs, and then I can provide any input going forward.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Beckles?
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening, sir.
In-person voting is $3,655. That's the estimate. That's for three poll books and 4,000 ballots. To have a election with the mailing component in the drop box is $23,181. That's the 4,000 ballots, the three poll books with the appeal box component, two technicians and two scanners.
Can I get that figure again for the mail-in ballots?
The one with the mail-in, the mail-in and the mail-in component is 23,181. And that includes in-person as well.
Thank you. So I'm sorry, you said 23,181, that's for mail-in, drop box, and in-person?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, but just in-person would be $3,655?
Correct.
And then, any other expenses?
We do, we have, we've estimated our hours, 40 hours for my, for the chair, for the vice chair, and for the vice judge per. Then we have, let's see here. We don't have any expenses for signs because we're going to reuse the signage that we purchased originally for, for the, the first election. And we have some reimbursements that we have to pay from the first election. But for the runoff, that's, that's the figure. The 23,181 plus the 40 hours. And then we also have the, the stipend that we would, for the 10 board members at $1,270. At the current rate, if you were to increase that rate at $300, it'd be $3,000 for a total of $34,556.25. And that includes the mail-in, in-person ballot drop box, drop-off component.
I'm sorry, with your other stipend, you said that's $34,000?
I'm sorry, let me go back to it, stand by.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So 34,256.25, that includes increasing the stipend for the 10 board members. If you left it at the current rate of 125, it'd be 32,526.25 to have the runoff election.
But to increase the stipend to?
It was mentioned the $300 for the board members versus the 125.
And that was for both elections?
Correct.
Thank you. So to the council, it seems like they're saying that we needed, that they would need an amount of $34,256 if, and 25 cent. And that would include increasing the stipend for the, the election board members.
That's correct.
Madam President?
Counsel.
Mr. Beckles, in the spreadsheet we are working on, I, I don't believe the, the increase in stipend was applied to the, for the election, the first election. I think it was only applied to the second. And the table I'm looking at, the, the stipend for the first election is still set at 125.
Mr. Beckles, you're muted.
Right, so with, without the increase, it was 32,000. And with the increase, it was 34,000 for stipend. That's the spreadsheet that, that we worked up. 32,526.25 at the 125. And it was 34,256.25 at, with the $300 increase. Was that what you were referring to, Tim?
Yeah, but that, that only, that in the, you've only applied the increase to the runoff. The, the increase has not been applied to the original one. If you apply it to the original, then the, the number will go up.
Correct, so if we applied to the, let me do the rough math here. So if we applied the 32,000, the 3,000. So, so if we applied it to the original, so it would be 35,526.25.
Council President, while he's speaking, can I ask?
Councilwoman Smallwood, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Ferguson has had her hand up for a minute. So what, if, if while they're doing that, I will acknowledge her. And then I'll come back to you.
My question is to Mr. Beck. What would be the cost if you just had outgoing postage? So I would say mailing out the ballots, but no in-mail, no mailing back in, where they would mail out the ballots, and then the ballots will be returned in the drop box. And the other type of voting would be, option would be in-person?
2,000, outbound is $2,200, and inbound is $2,200. So if this outbound, then you would just decrease that $23,000 figure by $2,200.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Councilwoman Smallwood?
Yes, my concern is we never got a budget for the first election. So where's the budget for the first election so we can really decide exactly how much money we are spending?
Well, we've.
We gave it the total of 40, we put in, I think we put in 40,000. I don't know if you spent it all or not.
It was 30,000 as well, go ahead, Tim.
As I said, it was 30,000 is in the approved budget.
So had they spent it all?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And we provided detailed accounting of what, of the expenditures to date.
You have?
Yes, we have.
To who?
To, to the administration. The Tim, Tim George has the, the spreadsheet and the invoices and the receipts.
Can we get a copy of it, Mr. George?
Well, yes, man, that was actually a spreadsheet I pulled together myself, and it was done. Really, we got the last numbers this morning. And we can certainly distribute that out to the whole council.
Okay.
Madam President?
Councilman Herring?
Yes, I guess my concern is if they have these spreadsheets, why don't we have them? Why are we getting these numbers over tonight, over Zoom, when we should have had those, had the spreadsheet way before now? If they had a budget for the special, for the, I mean, for the runoff election, we should have already had that information. We shouldn't have, you're sitting here writing down all these numbers, asking what, what is this? What is that? You know, how much is this? How much is that? Why don't we have this information in our hands?
Councilman Herring, please take in consideration that the election was just held last Monday. The people that volunteered to work with the election, Mr. George, and even the council members, we all have not only, I won't say other things to do. It's not, you know, but you have to take in consideration, they have lives also. So I mean, just, just because we, we have to sit here and, and get the, some figures, I mean, it's not that big of a deal that, that this is happening. The election just happened, and there's so many things going on in the interim, you know, that you, you can't just.
Madam President? Madam President? I, I have a job, too. I work a full-time job. I have other things and obligations in my life, too. I have to deal with other things, and I wasn't, that wasn't taken into consideration when my mother was dying. But let's, let's, let's look at this. Because I'm just saying that that's, if the spreadsheet is in front of these people right now, that is an email. So the spreadsheet had to been done sometimes, sometime within the last eight hours.
He just said that they got the figures together this morning.
Okay, and it's eight o'clock tonight. So we should have had that information. If they had a budget for, they should have had a, a, a estimate on how much a runoff is going to cost. They just did, there's just an election, that should have came out right after the, right after the election. We should have already had that information.
Take in consideration, Councilman Herring, that.
I'm taking into consideration that that is information that I need to make an informed decision on what I'm going to do. I'm not just going to sit here and, and give a, basically say, okay, here's 40,000, here's $30,000, when I don't know what went over the other $30,000. I haven't seen anything. Haven't seen that one piece of paper on how that money was spent, where, what it went to. And I'm not happy with the way the election was run at the, the, in the general election. So, you know, I know I'm not going to support no mail-in ballot, no, no mail-in voting. Again, after that, if you ask what we had on, on Monday, May 3.
Council President, may I respond?
Thank you, Councilman Herring. Mr. Beck?
Yeah, so it takes time to get quotes from vendors. And we reached out two days after the, we have, we have a budget for the runoff, first of all. Secondly, it takes time to get quotes from vendors, first of all. Secondly, the parameters change. We want to provide the council with as many options as possible. So we received our last quotes today from the vendor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beck.
You're welcome.
Madam President?
I'm sorry, the president of, I mean, the election chair, Mr. Aurora Montgomery, had his hand up for a while. I'm going to acknowledge him, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Wilson, and then I will come back to you.
Well, it was.
I'm sorry, point of order.
This is discussion amongst the council.
Point of order.
This is discussion amongst the council.
No, the, these are the, it's a discussion amongst the council, but the iss, the issues that need to be answered are from the election committee. The chairman is Mr. Aurora Montgomery. Mr. Beck is the vice chairman, and then Mr. George is the liaison from the city helping the election board. So I have no issue with the chairman or the vice chairman answering the questions. Councilman Herring, point of order. We're not going to have this, we're going to respect one another.
Madam President, I had a question. I had a question pertaining, pertaining to what Mr. Beck said. Madam President, I had a question. I had a question pertaining, pertaining to what Mr. Beck said.
Just a minute, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Wilson. You were not next in line. Mr. Aurora had his hand up. Mr. Aurora Montgomery?
You know what, Council President Jones, I will go ahead and let them speak. I, I'll speak after they're done, since they're, they're very adamant about speaking now, so allow them to speak, and I'll, I'll address it afterwards.
Thank you, Mr. Aurora. Councilwoman Wilson?
Mr. Beck made mention of reimbursements, and I'm, I want to know what reimbursement he's speaking of, because he didn't say.
Lunch. We, we paid for lunch out of pocket. For the, for the, um, our council, I'm sorry, our, uh, election board members. And then reimbursement.
And, and in my mind, Madam President?
Just a moment, Mr. George. Councilwoman Wilson, does that answer your question?
Uh, that's the only reimbursement that he's speaking of?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
President, I have a question.
Councilwoman Smallwood, Mr. George has his hand, had his hand up and has it up. He will speak now, and then I will acknowledge you. Mr. George?
Well, I, I just wanna say there were a few other reimbursements as well. Uh, we purchased PPE screens for the tables. Um, Mr. Montgomery was nice enough to use his personal credit card to cover the Zoom expenses, because the city doesn't have a credit card right now. We're in the process of getting one, so um, Mr. Montgomery and myself use our personal cards to cover some of the expenses, so that we could carry out this election on time. Um, and we were reimbursed for those expenses. So that's part of what, what, what Mr. Beck was talking about.
I forgot about the second part, the other one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Smallwood, was it? Councilwoman Smallwood?
As, as a former election judge, it is my understanding that you should have brought your own lunch, and the city never pays for a lunch. You bring your lunch with you.
Well, we were there for twenty hours, you know.
I understand this, sir, but even as, when I was a judge at the state level, we was always instructed to bring your lunch with you, because once you get in the room, you are not supposed to leave out. And the state never paid, or the city of Glanada never paid for a luncheon.
It wasn't a luncheon, it was lunch, but if this council.
Lunch? Lunch for individual people.
Pay for it on my part, it's not a problem. But thank you for the information. I do appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Council President? I have, I have one other question for Mr. Beck.
Yes.
Beckles, uh, you mentioned something about forty hours ti, uh, times three.
Yes.
So, okay, and that was for the chair, the co-chair, and the.
There's two vice supervisors and a chair.
Okay.
Yes, so for.
And can you tell me what those forty hours are, are dealing with? What, what?
Estimated, to, want to negotiate, um, you know, to move the business of the election forward. So there's time during the day when we're answering emails, calling vendors, making sure that we have everything in place to do the election, and we're gonna do the same thing over again. So we submitted our time in a, in an hours format. That's how we keep track of things, you know. We put it on our calendars and write them down.
Okay, and also, you said something about, uh, that was an amount of a hundred and twenty-five dollars times ten for, for stipend, and a hun, or three hundred dollars per stipend. So, um, those three, those three persons are included in, in those figures as well?
Yes, they, yes, we are. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam President?
Councilman Harry?
Okay, now, they should not be included in a hundred and twenty-five dollar stipend. They hourly, they're getting paid more than any other election judge up there. I don't know why they're being rolled in. We've never rolled in the, 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 the chair and the vice chair. Also, what is this vice judge? Is that in, is that in the resolution for, for them repaid hourly?
It is. The one he supported, I think, two thousand and seven, it, it has one twenty-five, uh, one forty-five for the chair and, and two vice supervisors at one twenty-five. That's in the, in the actual, that thing is from two thousand and six or seven that you sponsored, Mr. Harry.
So they have for, uh, 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 the chair and two vice supervisor, and two supervisor, vice supervisors.
That's, that's what you wrote, yes.
And they're getting a flat fee of one forty-five?
No, the chair is one twenty-five, the two vice supervisors is, is one twenty-five, the chair is one forty-five, along with the, um, the other board members at one twenty-five.
And the hourly rate comes in where, how much?
Fifteen dollars an hour.
For the who?
For the chair and the two vice supervisors.
Hmm, I might look at that piece of legislation. I remember that.
Well, thank you, sir.
All right, so.
Is it my turn, Madam President?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Aurora Montgomery, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, referencing the resolution that Mr. Beckles used to speaking of, it is Resolution R forty-two dash two zero zero seven. It was sponsored by James Herring, President. Date of introduction was April ninth, two thousand and seven. While it does not actually mention two vice supervisors, it does say, um, the chairperson and two assistants shall receive fifteen dollars per hour for all work performed leading up to the election day. And this is the, these are the forty hours that we're speaking of. Actually, it, it could take more than that. It could be less than that. This is work that we put into getting the election going. Um, times that we spend putting together flyers, advertising, speaking with this person, speaking with that person, that's what this is all about. So the resolution, as I said, is R forty-two, two thousand and seven. I have it right here in hand. I don't know if you can see that or not. But, um, it does state that. Um, and it does state that it's a flat fee of one forty-five on election day um, for the chairperson, and it does state the election board members will receive a flat rate fee of one twenty-five on election day. So additionally, I wanted to state that there were other little miscellaneous charges that were mentioned. As Mr. George mentioned, there were also Zoom charges. There were fees that we paid to the moderator, and of course, yes, the lunch. I mean, I don't see, I mean, when you're spending thirty thousand dollars, I don't see what the big issue would be with spending two hundred dollars on lunch for ten people and volunteers that gave up their time, um, so that we can feed them. I mean, there's really not a, I, I just don't see a big issue about that, especially when you're spending thirty thousand dollars on an election already. Um, also, I just wanted to state, um, with regards to the options, um, I just wanna ask the council to keep in mind, please, that eighty percent of the ballots we received were by mail-in and Dropbox. Eighty percent. That is a huge number. It is a number, that number alone is one of the highest numbers that the city of Glanada has ever seen. Um, the other twenty percent came in from walk-ins. Um, so to, to cast a vote or not cast a, what to cast, to not cast a vote for mail-in, um, would suppress voters, because at that point, you know, you're telling voters that they're gonna have to come in, vote in person. You're subjecting senior citizens to COVID, um, you know, senior citizens that don't want to come out, you know, um, senior citizens that aren't able to come out. Um, so again, to to vote against the mail-in, you would suppress voters. And, um, I know that they are council, I, I'm sure all seven council members are very concerned about senior citizens. And as such, I just couldn't see why any one council member would not vote for the mail-in option versus the in-person only. Um, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aurora Montgomery.
Madam President, I have, I have one other question. Why is Mr. Montgomery and Mr. George paying for Zoom when the city has a Zoom account?
The Zoom account we have for the legislative body, the mayor, the mayor has a Zoom account, has, is sharing a Zoom account with the legislative body. And I, I'm thinking that the, the, um, the election board needed their own Zoom account, and that may be why that they're doing that.
They didn't need their own Zoom account. They got a Zoom account. You got the Zoom account, and you should have shared that information with them, so they wouldn't have to come out their pocket with that. I don't know why you think it's, it's, it's your Zoom account, it's not your Zoom account.
It's the city's, the city of Glanardan Zoom account, Mr. Harry.
You should have allowed them not to have to come out their pocket with any money and allow them to use that Zoom account.
Well, please forgive me.
They should not have had to come out their pocket with anything.
Please forgive me, Mr. Harry. Uh, in, in hindsight, we know the next time that it will be done a different way. Okay, so now, uh, I think it's now the council, we need to determine what kind of election we're going to have.
Well, Madam President?
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes, you made the statement that, uh, and council members were helping the election also. What council members and how were council members helping?
I never said council members was helping the election. But we stayed, most of the council members that, I, I'll just speak for myself. As a council member, I stayed as far away from whatever decisions they had to make or whatever they needed to do, because I was a candidate. And I know as a candidate that I can't have anything to do with the election board.
Well, I'm just, I'm just going by a statement that you made, Council President.
I guess my question would be what happened on election day? Because you sure had a lot of conversations with the election board on election day.
No, I did not.
Yes, you did. I, I sat there and watched you.
No, Mr. Harry, please. I did not have any conversation with the election board on election day. You had more conversation with them. We're not gonna go through this.
No.
Because that's not true. Now, I'm not getting upset, because I know that what you're saying is not true.
Everybody out there saw it. They pointed it out to me.
That's not true. I didn't have any interactions with the election committee on election day. I was down in the lower part of the parking lot with my sister.
And they came out there to see you. Mr. Ricky Montgomery was out there talking to all three of you. And I, we sat there and watched it. People said, what is the election George doing down there? Mr. Montgomery came out and talked to the cause campaign. Mr. Richard Montgomery came out and talked to the cause campaign.
Thank you, Councilman Harry.
So my thing is, don't sit there and make a statement that isn't true. You have had interactions with the election.
I have not had any interactions about what they do or how they do anything.
Yeah, okay.
I, I was a candidate, and I know better than that.
No, you don't.
Thank you, Councilman Harry. Um, now, we need to, as a council, we need to determine, um, this is an emergency ordinance for them to receive, uh, funding to have the runoff election, which the runoff election is supposed to be done within thirty days. This is something that we need to address tonight. The figure that they've given us, um, is around, I would say, thirty-five thousand dollars in order to have this runoff election, if we're gonna choose the, um, but, okay, let's first determine what type of election we wanna have. I'll start with Councilwoman Eason. He's saying mail-in, Dropbox, in-person. Or in-person only. Councilwoman Eason, we can't hear you.
I would say mail-in, Dropbox, and in-person. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Harry?
Would never support another mail-in ballot until we have somebody who knows what they're doing. This, this election, the general election was a mess. And, um, from everything I've heard and the things I've seen, and ballots, uh, uh, being taken home, no. I think you either do, need to do like Ms. Ferguson said, send them the ballots, they can drop them in the Dropbox, or they can mail it in themselves, or, um, or come in in person. But, but that's to send, put posters out there, and have it go to a P O box. When I talked to the Board of Elections, they said it's never should have went to a P O box. Those ballots should have came to this, came to this building and been secured, and they weren't. You know, so no, I, I prefer if, if gotta come out, they gotta come out and vote. I don't think, I'm gonna tell you honestly, I don't think Mr. Williams is gonna get a fair election. It's just that, I don't think he is. Especially if you do mail-in. I know he's not gonna get a fair election, so I don't think it's right. I don't think, until we get somebody that knows what they're doing, that's not gonna sit there and change the rule every time they, every time they get in their feelings. Um, I don't support, I, I don't support another mail-in ballot, you know. I mean, that's just the way it is, so, no.
So you're saying in-person only, Mr. Harry?
You can do the, in-person or have a Dropbox, one of the two.
Okay, and I'm not even gonna get into that.
Please don't, because it's not, I'm not addressing you, so don't, don't. If you, if you, if you, if you're Mr. Montgomery's advocate.
Thank you, Mr. Harry. Point of order, point of order, Mr. Harry.
Say that's what you're gonna be and not be the.
Point of order, Mr. Harry. Councilwoman Smallwood? Your choice of.
In-person only.
In-person only?
In-person only.
Thank you. Councilman Williams?
Um, since I'm a candidate, I think it's proper for me to abstain on this, because either way could be consumed, it could be seen as biased on one side or the other, so I will abstain on this, because I am a candidate in this, and I think it's proper to do so.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wilson?
I'm against mail-in.
Okay.
So we can have a Dropbox or either, um, in-person.
Okay. Councilwoman Ferguson?
Um, I'm not understanding why we just have two options when the three was presented.
There are three. There are three: mail-in, Dropbox, or in-person.
I thought it was mail-in, Dropbox, in-person being one.
That's two.
No, I'm saying, and then the other one was in-person. I had inquired about just having a Dropbox and in-person, which would be three different ones. I mean, of course, it would just take twenty-two hundred dollars off of the bill, but, um, so that's just the only two options we have. Either the one that we, basically how we did it on May third, or May third, or just in-person only.
They can do in-person. There can be in-person, and there can be Dropbox, and there's mail-in. There's three different categories that they can do this. I'm sure that if they, if, if it ended up uh, with just Dropbox only, that they could get a price for Dropbox only. If it was just in-person, there could be a, uh, 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 cost developed for in-person only. If it was just mail-in, there would probably be a cost difference for just mail-in. But he did mention in the beginning, mail-in and Dropbox was a certain amount, and in-person was a certain amount.
Um, Mr. Beck, or, um, I have a question, because I don't think that's right.
Okay, Mr. Aurora has his hand up.
I'm still talking.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, what I'm asking again is of what I, the way I, I got it, and then I can have one of the election people, um, leave me a clarity. I'm seeing two options being offered. One being, you know, the way we did it for this election just passed, which gave us three options: mail-in, Dropbox, in-person. That's one option. The other option is in-person only. And I was asking, which would, am I? And I was asking, which would, in my mind, which would make it a third option would be just in-person and Dropbox, no mail-in. So could someone tell me what we're working with here?
To ask, to answer your question, and I think you posed it earlier. If we, we have, we have, they have the ability to mail the ballots out to all of the citizens of Glen Arden. And if, and there's a component that it would then be mailed back to a P O box, or you could, if you want to have them put in the Dropbox, that is an option as well. We just take off $2,020 off of the invoice and that's for the postage fee. Wouldn't, wouldn't be a postage on there. So if that's the component that, that the council will want to go with, we can, the vendor can craft that component for you.
But just for clarity, what we are voting on now is the mail-in, Dropbox, and in-person is one option, all together in a package, right?
Yes.
And then the second one is in-person only.
In-person only, then we have in-person, mail-in. Okay, you need a Dropbox either way with mail-in.
Okay.
So the Dropbox comes with that component. And then it, within those, when then the in-person, then that, then that has the equipment and those types of things. But part of the breakdown, and this is why we tried to, we didn't know what, exactly what you guys wanted. So we have some detail. So the postage, the postage to mail the, let me go to the line, the specific line item. So for the, the, where is it? The in-person and the ballot Dropbox component, the outbound postage is $2,200. If the inbound post is $2,200, so if you eliminate the inbound postage, then the citizens of Glen Arden have to then either use the Dropbox to cast their ballot or they would bring it with them on the day of election and cast their ballot. But they would not, that component, they would not be able to mail it in as a person. They have to, to exit their, exit their home and, and, and put it in, in the Dropbox. But that component can be crafted and that's, you know, so we would just minus out the $2,200 for the outbound postage.
Okay. Oh, well, I would say mail-in, Dropbox, in-person.
All right, and my choice would be also the, the three. So let's see what, what we have. I would choose mail-in, the Dropbox, and in-person. So let me see. Mr. Herring said Dropbox and in-person. Miss Smallwood said in-person only. Miss Easton said all three. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to miss you. Mrs. Wilson is in-person and Dropbox. Okay, so it looks like the Dropbox and in-person would be the type of election that the council as a consensus would clearly, are clearly looking for.
Ms. Jones, will you please count to four? No action can be taken without the consent of four council members.
There's four, for Dropbox, there's four people for Dropbox. There's four people for in-person, Mr. Herring. I can count to four.
And you're saying that the mail-in Dropbox is the consensus?
The Dropbox and in-person is the consensus.
He is such an A.
Stop, come on.
Wow.
Oh, come on. I, I, I'm not going to have any disrespect for anyone. Mr. Herring.
Yes, but that's why she's sitting on the.
The council rules, the council rules indicate there will be no.
She needs to be put in timeout and given 15 minutes.
Councilman Herring, please.
She needs to be escorted out and put in the waiting room.
Councilman Herring.
Like you did me, you need to.
Councilman Herring.
Point of order, Madam President. I'm asking that this citizen be put into the waiting room. Because.
I'll put you in the waiting room until you can calm down. The person only made one comment. We've asked her not to do that.
Madam President.
Ms. Jones.
Madam President.
I'm sorry, Mr. Williams.
Can I ask Mr. Beckles a question?
Sure.
Mr. Beckles.
Yes.
I have, I'm, I'm heard a price for an in-person to be $3,000 some odd dollars, correct?
$3,655, in-person only.
Only. And $3,500 approximately for all three, correct? Thirty, thirty, not thirty-five, thirty-five thousand.
No, 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 that, the three, I think you're conflating the stipends and everything else. No, it was $23,000, some change.
Twenty-three, okay, twenty-three, okay, right, okay.
Now you're down to 21.
Twenty-one, okay. All right, so 3,000 and some change, 21 and some change. The difference from mail-in to in-person, correct? Where's, I'm doing a gap analysis. That big gap, where's that money going to? That, that.
You have.
$18,000.
You have the postage.
No, no, because you just already said you took the posters off, so there can't be posters.
Looking at, I'm looking at the $23,000 figure, what includes, okay? I'm going to add up to for you. Okay, election ballot data entry ballot layout, 1,0575. Supply, print, fold, insert, official absentee, election ballots, vote instruction sheet, outer return. She can see everywhere, 12,276. So your gap analysis, the, the, the long, the long pole in the tent is a 12,276.
Okay, that's good, that's good. That's, that's where I was missing something, is to insert 4,000.
Yeah.
4,000 ballots and I, and who's that vendor doing that?
Electech.
Electech?
Yes.
Now, I'm just ask one more question. Were they the only vendor to?
They were not.
Y'all had three vendors?
We were three.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I'm sorry, I think Councilwoman Ferguson had her hand up.
Okay, I'm just saying this for record at this point. When I was asking my questions, I was asking, did we have three different options? And so I was led to believe that we would just had two options, but then when you took the count, you mentioned that there were votes for just the box and in-person. So that, to me, is three options. That, that wasn't on the table. That's why I was asking, could it be on the table? You never said one with the other.
I'm sorry, I, I, when I did this, I'm looking at mail-in and Dropbox, they could have did it as one. But listening to the election committee, then we could, we could break off each, each one, and it could be mail-in, Dropbox, or in-person. That, to me, is three different options. Am I correct in what I'm saying, Mr. Aurora?
Yeah, can I interject? Yes, please. So basically, the mail-in, I mean, basically, the, what Councilwoman Ferguson was suggesting is basically the way it's going. Because what we had was the, we had, we had one option which would allow the citizen, which would allow the citizen to either vote in person, mail-in their ballot, or put it in the Dropbox, right? So by removing, by removing the mailbox, we now have Dropbox only and in-person.
No, by removing the mail-in.
Also, which would also remove that cost because there will be no mailing back. So it will remove that $2,200 cost, which is what you were proposing initially. Does that make sense? Councilwoman Ferguson.
Oh, yes, I was just saying that I didn't see that being an option at first, but.
Right, but, but the way, the, the way the votes fell, because everyone would say, well, I'm, you know, we don't want mail-in. We don't want mail-in. So that basically removed that postage and it removed, and it removed the postal box, basically. So it still gives us the in-person and the, and the Dropbox option.
Yeah, so everyone will be.
And it won't, and it won't, it, it really won't suppress voters. I mean, when you're looking at, when you're looking at in-person only, you're then getting into suppressing voters because people are not going to want to come out to vote.
Right.
For in-person only. So I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement with the, you know, if that's the way it has to go, as long as we have some kind of mail, some kind of, you know, return option, you know, so that everyone doesn't have to just come out in-person, then this would be the next viable option.
Council President.
Councilwoman Smallwood.
Are you planning to let Councilman Herring back in the meeting?
Yes, I am.
When?
In 15 minutes.
15 minutes.
When the 15 minutes is up.
The 15 minutes.
Excuse me?
No, no, they're not.
Yes, they are.
Excuse me, Madam President.
Councilwoman Wilson, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Easton had her hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I'll change my options from all three to Dropbox and in-person because I know when I was down at the end of the building, a lot, a lot of people were asking where the Dropbox was, for the most part. So I believe a lot of people were using that option so they did not have to go into the building. So that would save a little bit of money.
Thank you.
Thanks.
President, that's why I was asking. It wasn't an option at first, so that's what I would have chosen. So I, that's the same Dropbox and in-person.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Ferguson, Councilwoman Easton. Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes, please let him back in because if he's the representative of the people, he needs to be in the meeting.
I understand that, Councilwoman Wilson, but with this level of respect that we need to, to carry on. I understand that a citizen had an outburst. I've asked the citizen, we've told the citizen that that's not going to happen, but for him to continue bickering and be ahead with the contentious behavior of keep, continued and go on when I've already said the citizen understands that they're not going to do that again. He doesn't.
Excuse me, excuse me, Council President. I think that you're really being unfair. Now, he is, he is an elected official and he needs to be in the meeting.
I understand that he needs to be in the meeting because he is an elected official, but he needs to conduct himself as an elected official, as a leader of the people.
And, and you have.
I've already addressed the citizen. I don't need him to continue with the contentious behavior.
Council President, can I add?
A point of order. Let, let me allow Mr. Herring back in so we can move forward with this. It's getting late in the hour.
Why is it that you don't want us to say anything? What's up with that?
I, I don't mind you saying anything, but if I could see your face and you had your hand up so I could see, it would be the better control of the meeting.
Can you, can you, can you hear my voice? Can you hear my voice?
Point of order. Can we just let him back in and go? This is just foolishness.
That's what I'm.
I agree it's foolishness. You shouldn't have done it.
Just let him back in, Ms. Jones, please.
Councilman Herring is now returning to the meeting. This disrespectful behavior will not continue. Council rules tells us that any personal attacks on individuals will not be tolerated during the meeting proceedings.
What do you think happened to him? That was a personal attack on him. Please.
And I, and I've spoken to the citizen.
You should have put her out of the meeting as well.
Thank you. We'll go on. Okay, so now, looking at the vote for the type of election that we'll have, the in-person and Dropbox, Ms. Easton was in-person and Dropbox. Mr. Herring was in-person and Dropbox. That's two. Ms. Smallwood was in-person only. Mr. Williams abstained. Ms. Councilwoman Wilson was in-person and Dropbox. Ms. Ferguson was in-person and Dropbox, and I was in-person and Dropbox. So four for in-person and Dropbox. That's the consensus. So we will, the council has decided that it will be an in-person and Dropbox election. Now, the next order of business concerning this resolution.
Excuse me, excuse me, could you, could you say, hold the names again?
For that. Councilwoman Easton elected to have in-person and Dropbox.
Okay, just, just give me the names.
Councilman Herring elected to have in-person and Dropbox. Councilwoman Smallwood elected to have in-person. Mr. Williams abstained. Councilwoman Wilson elected to have in-person and Dropbox. Councilwoman Ferguson elected to have in-person and Dropbox. Councilwoman Jones elected to have in-person and Dropbox.
Excuse me, Council President.
Council person, Councilwoman Wilson, Easton. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Wilson.
Yeah, before we move on, I'd like to ask the attorney a question.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Kapinski. Ms. Jones just put Mr. Herring out of the meeting. And as an elected official, I don't think that that should happen. And so can you, what can we do concerning that? Because the people have elected him to represent them and he should be in the meetings. And if she's not going to, if she's not going to handle the, other citizens who are doing a personal attack, then she shouldn't say, she shouldn't do anything with him. So what can be done?
There are rules of order for everyone, and I would strongly encourage everyone to be more civil about how business is conducted. It is now nine o'clock, an hour and a half has gone by, and we basically have gotten through one item.
So I feel Ms. Jones is at fault as well. So she needs to, to know how to conduct her meetings as well. If the people have elected someone to represent them, then they shouldn't be put out of the meeting. Thank you.
Madam President.
Mr. Herring, counsel, to the citizens of the city of Glen Arden, the city of Glen Arden council members have adopted a, have established a resolution to establish council rules. Under the council rule number three, responsibilities, rights, and duties of council members, under rules of the meeting, number E, personal attacks on individuals will not be tolerated during meeting proceedings. Persons will be removed from the meeting by the city police officer after one verbal warning. Now, this is before COVID. Also, under the rules debate, I'm sorry, not rule debate, but also in the council rules, is council decorum. The members of the council shall neither be, shall neither by conversation nor otherwise delay or interrupt proceedings or the peace of the council. The council members shall obey the city council rules of procedure as well as the decision of the council president. So we have rules in place to address these issues.
Madam President.
Councilman Herring.
Obviously, but you, but you administer those rules arbitrarily amongst who you like and who you don't like. That's what the problem is. That, that citizen should have been set out because she didn't need no one more. Cursing online. Cursing online, and she's still in here, but you're going to put me out as, as an elected official that was elected by the people to represent the people. So I'm just letting you know right now, I'm not voting for anything because I missed a big portion of it, so that's it.
Thank you, Councilman Herring.
You're welcome.
All right, now, we've, the consensus is that we will have a Dropbox in-person election. The next item should be how much the funds that they, that the election board is asking for. The, now that we have established what type of election we're going to have, can the election board or Mr. George give me a kind of a rough figure as to how much they will be, the election will need to redirect for the election?
Mr. George, you want me to take that?
Sure, if you have the numbers handy, I'll just pull my calculator out to start doing some.
So basically, what we'll be looking at, um we would need to reduce that thirty-four-two-five-six-point-two-five. We would need to reduce that by two thousand two hundred dollars.
So you're looking somewhere around thirty-two thousand dollars?
Subtract the two thousand. Let me get my calculator. We're looking at thirty-four two-five-six-point-two-five minus twenty-two-hundred.
Thirty-two oh three.
We're looking at thirty-two oh five six. Thirty-two oh five six twenty-five.
Okay.
If you want to round it up to thirty-two-one, thirty-two-one, that's just line two. Make it an even number. Thank you. Is that, is that all you needed?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the figure on line twelve for this um budget would be um, he's saying thirty-two-one-hundred. All right, now, um is there a motion to adopt this as an emergency ordinance? Is that my next move?
Yeah, I make a motion to adopt it as an emergency.
Thank you, Councilwoman Easton. Is there a second? I'll second it as an emergency. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. As an emergency ordinance, Councilwoman Easton.
Yes.
Councilman Herring.
I abstain since I don't know what's going on.
Thank you, Councilman Ha- Herring. Councilwoman Smallwood.
No.
Count, uh Councilman Williams.
Based on attorney, I have some constant that, based on the attorney's opinion, I'm going to say yes as an emergency. But I'm still have some pause because it does, it's it's not going through regular order as a and I just had some pause about that, but I'm not going to say yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Uh I pass.
Councilwoman Ferguson.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Jones, yes. Councilwoman Wilson.
No.
All right, that's three yeses, one abstain, and two noes. I'm sorry, it was one, two, three, four yeses, two noes, and one abstain. So that fails as an emergency ordinance um to get the monies for the election.
I I would really, I would really urge the council to reconsider this. I mean, th- there's a, there's a requirement under the charter to have this runoff within thirty days. This is not really a discretionary decision by by the council. This is more ministerial. You you all have the discretion and terminal, what kind of election you wish to have held, and you've done that. But in terms of moving this money over, the charter requires this runoff to occur. And I I would respectfully request that the council members revisit their position on this.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kapinski. Is there any other uh council members um that would like to uh revisit their vote? Mr. Herring?
As I said, since I don't know what's going on, I was kicked out the meeting. I don't know what the conversation was. I abstain.
Mr. Herring, the only conversation that we had while you were.
I abstain. I don't need a comment.
Uh Councilwoman Smallwood.
My position stays the same. I'm not in favor for mail-in ballot or or anything.
No, this is, thi- this Councilwoman Smallwood is for the uh add the monies that we can have an election.
In order to add the money, you use in the mail-in and uh you use in the mail-in and in-person voting. And I'm I'm, I want in-person voting only because of the way the mail-in and in-person voting what happened this year. I got many calls from the citizens complaining about the election, and they are asking for uh in-person only, so I'm gonna uh give them what they asked for in-person only.
Thank you, Councilwoman Smallwood.
Welcome.
Councilwoman Wilson.
No.
All right, so this fails as an emergency.
Madam President.
Councilman Williams.
You just heard uh Madam, Madam Councilwoman Smallwood said that if it was by in-person voting, that she would that's what I thought she would support it coming forth as an emergency lesson. That would give the, my counting, that would be five votes for, and all of your, everybody there agree for in-person. So you have an option to move this thing forward as a, as attorney just articulated.
Okay. Council.
And I'm, I'm, let me ask Madam's, Madam's um Smallwood the question if I may, Madam President.
Councilman Williams.
Uh Ms. Smallwood, uh did I hear you correctly say that you would support the legislation if it was in person to be emergency ordinance if it was an in-person vote?
In person only, yes.
Yes, okay.
Thank you, Councilman Will- Williams. Uh Councilwoman Ferguson.
Yeah, I was just gonna um say that um I thought we had um omitted the mail-in. Anyway, we said in person and Dropbox.
Right.
Or 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 did we say mail? I mean, we didn't, I mean, the mail-in wasn't an option. Am I correct?
Correct.
So um this uh Councilwoman Smallwood, I I heard you mention that you were against um, I know you said, just now you said in person only, but when you were um asked the second time, you said you was against mail-in and in person, but mail-in wasn't an option. So I, just for clarity, I mean, because it seemed like you had it um.
My, my, my first decision, and I'm sticking by it, was in person only.
Okay, thank you.
I haven't changed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Montgomery.
Yeah, I I just want to um again just reach out to these council members, especially Ms. Smallwood, um and Ms. Wilson, and Mr. Herring, all three who have always expressed such concern about the senior citizens. Voting against this, once again, you are putting senior citizens at risk because you are now forcing them to come out and vote in person during COVID. Again, you are forcing senior citizens to come out and vote in person during COVID while the state is still under a COVID warning. These are the senior citizens that Council, Councilwoman Smallwood, Councilwoman Wilson, and Councilman Herring always talk about how they want to take care of the senior citizens. I want you to reconsider your 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 votes and ask yourself, is your vote strictly because you want to hurt the election board? Not move forward with this election, or you want to hurt the senior citizens? Which one? Thank you.
Madam President.
Councilman Herring.
There's a, there's a section that allows for absentee voting, and you see any citizen, and when the ballot can reach out to the election board and and request a ballot. But again, I'm not participating because I don't know what's going on because I was blocked out of the meeting. So I still abstain.
Thank you, Councilman Herring. All right, as Mi- as Mr. Williams uh stated, um because we all did agree, there was five of us that agreed to in person with the council.
Uh, have a people agreeing to in person?
Pardon?
You don't have five people agreeing?
To in person, yes, we did.
When did you take the vote for in person only?
I didn't take it for in, uh there was the council per, Ms. Easton uh said uh all three in the beginning, and then she said uh Dropbox or in person. Then you said in person.
I say in person only.
Okay, then they also agreed that it would be in person.
But no, but they're agreeing with in person with a Dropbox. I'm not including a Dropbox.
No, they said either or, in person.
No, they did. Okay, in person with a Dropbox.
Thank you, Councilwoman Smallwood. Councilwoman Easton.
Just so I'm um, for clarity, I basically said Dropbox and in person. And I'm gonna stick with Dropbox and in person because I know a lot of people wanted to use the Dropbox, including some of the seniors who can't even walk. So no, I'm sticking with Dropbox and in person. There's no or. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so um Mr. Ca- uh I'm sorry, Councilwoman Ferguson.
Mr. Kapinski. Um if we do not make the thirty days, what would happen? What is the um ramifications for for not miss making the thirty-day requirement?
Well, I, I mean, it it's, it's just, it's gonna be that you're gonna be in violation of a provision of your charter. It's gonna, I mean, obviously, you're supposed to do things within the time period set forth in your charter. I I guess the question really is, you know, if if the council wants to have in person and Dropbox, then this is gonna have to go through the, you know, the regular process because you need five votes to move the money around.
So the regular process would probably be another thirty days before the election could probably be held with the um
I mean, is it like a fine or something? I mean.
No, it's not a fine, but you know, obviously, as stewards of the community, uh the charter is what what is to guide the conduct of of the elected body, and the elected body should exercise its very best efforts to make sure that it complies with all the timelines contained within the charter.
I agree totally. I do. I agree with that. I mean, you know, we just need to get it done.
Right.
This is not good.
And I haven't really thought through exactly how that affects the installation of other you know, you have incoming elected officials, and then obviously, I don't know if the mayor is a carryover mayor, or there's just a vacancy. I think it's probably just a vacancy until the position is filled. I strongly urge you all to try and breach some sort of middle ground that goes ahead so that this special election can take place.
Thank you, Mr. Kapinski. Council members, I appeal to you that this election needs to take place. We we need to uh move forward with the the business of the city. All right, having said that, um Mr. Kapinski, I guess we'll talk about what what happens next or how we move forward um.
Okay.
Because this is uh, it's not going to go forward. All right, the next thing on the agenda.
Well, Madam, Madam President.
Councilman Williams.
It's being read as a uh first reading of the regular ordinance now. Correct.
I'm sorry, you're saying this will be a first reading?
Yes, not emergency.
Right, it's not an emergency anymore. And it needs to go to a public hearing. All right, the next piece of legislation is um R forty-three. I'm sorry, R forty-three twenty-twenty-one, introduced by Robin Jones at the request of the administration, public hearing April twentieth twenty-twenty-one, regular session, date of introduction, May tenth twenty-twenty-one. A resolution to execute a cooperative bid contract with NZI Construction Corporation for resurfacing and related improvements in the city in Ward Three. Whereas the mayor and the administration of the city of Glen Arden, the city, with the advice and the assistance of NZI Construction Corporation, have identified a select number of streets within the boundaries of that area of the city of Glen Arden in Ward Three that require resurfacing and or repaving and related improvements. And whereas the cost of resurfacing and or repaving the streets in question and performing the necessary related improvements will exceed six thousand dollars. And whereas, given the anticipated cost of the work, the city would be required to engage in a competitive procurement process under section eight-one-eight-A of the city charter, except that the city is permitted to participate in a public contract that was the subject of a competitive bid process by another governmental entity with comparable procurement procedures pursuant to to charter section eight-one-eight-B. And whereas Prince George's County, the county, has a current contract with NZI Construction Corporation for road improvement services, including the type of work required by the city which contracted, which contract was awarded to NZI Construction Corp. By the county, following a competitive bid process using standards comparable to or more stringent than other cities. And whereas NZI Construction Corp has submitted a proposal attached here as exhibit A for road resurfacing and related improvements in Ward Three, which will now, which will not involve the construction of sidewalks, driveway aprons, and in- inlets in the scope of service. And whereas NZI Construction Corporation is willing to extend the terms of its contract with the county to the city and to perform the work within the scope of the work. And I'm sorry, perform the work within the scope of work as being most immediately and urgently necessary. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Glen Arden, sitting in regular session this tenth day of May twenty-twenty-one, has determined that the city council approves the award of a contract for road resurfacing and related improvements to NZI Construction Corporation in the amount of one hundred ninety-five thousand in the amount of one hundred ninety-five thousand, two hundred ten dollars for the work set forth in Exhibit A, subject to change, subject to change order amendment or modification in the scope of work as may be permitted by the contract documents and approved by the city based on the terms and conditions of the county contract and that the mayor be and hereby authorized to sign a cooperative bid agreement in substantially the form attached heretofore as Exhibit A. And two, that the contract amount be payable from the Ward Three Street Project Capital Outlay Street Paving Line Item seventy-six fourteen thirty, ten-ten, in the city's annual budget. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption. Is there a motion to accept Resolution R forty-three twenty-twenty-one?
So move.
Second. Thank you, Councilman Williams. Thank you, Councilman Herring. Is there any discussion?
Council President.
Councilwoman Smallwood.
What's the job number?
The job number for the City of Glen Arden is twenty dash oh-one. I'm sorry, twenty-one.
I'm looking at the job number on line thirty-one on the first page.
Mr. George, do you have the job number for the county on that?
I've sent that over to the court before, but I can certainly, when I get to the office in the morning, I can certainly send you all a copy of NZI's contract with the county.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yes, Madam President. Mr. George, have we confirmed that there's not going to be any pipe work, sewer work, or anything on those streets within the next year or so?
You mean WSSC work?
WSSC, BG&E, anybody's going to cut up those streets?
No, we haven't confirmed that, but quite often, they don't know until they're going to do the work. We can certainly reach out and ask them before we have NZI get working on it.
Well, they've been doing a pipe replacement project throughout Glen Arden, and I wanted to know if they hit. They've done Ward One, I think they, I don't know if they got in Ward Two. I think they hit some pipes in Ward Two, but and I know they were working on some of Ward Three.
Well, I'm happy to call them tomorrow, sir, and find out and get an answer before we sign the contract if.
All right, thanks.
And also, I'd like to weigh in on that. The only letter that citizens in Ward Three have gotten from WSSC is the work that they're going to be doing down Brightseed Road. And right now, they're just in a real preliminary state as to what they're going to do there. There is no work within Ward Three that they've sent us any letters pertaining to. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smallwood?
Pass.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones is a yes. Councilwoman Smallwood?
Pass.
So that's a no. All right, so we have.
I said pass. Let the record be reported. I said pass.
So six yeses and one no, or pass. R forty-three twenty-two-one passes. The next piece of legislation is R forty-four twenty-two-one, introduced by Robin Jones, co-sponsor at the request of the administration, public hearing April twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, session, regular session, date of introduction, May tenth, twenty-twenty-one. A resolution to execute a cooperative bid contract with NZI Construction Corporation for parking lot resurfacing and related improvements at the City of Glen Arden Municipal Building. Whereas the mayor and the administration of the City of Glen Arden, Maryland, the city, with the advice and assistance of the NZI Construction Corporation, have identified that the municipal center parking lot requires resurfacing and/or repaving and related improvements. And whereas the cost of resurfacing and/or repaving the municipal building parking lots in question and performing the necessary related improvements will exceed $6,000. And whereas, given the anticipated cost of the work, the city would be required to engage in a cooperative procurement process under Section eight-eighteen-A of the city charter, except the city is permitted to participate in public contract in a public contract that was subject to a competitive bid process by another governmental entity with comparable procurement procedures pursuant to Charter, I'm sorry, pursuant to Charter Section eight-one-eight-B. And whereas the Prince George's County, the county, has current contract job number with NZI Construction Corp, NZI, for the paving improvement services, including the type of work required by the city, which contract was awarded to NZI Construction Corporation by the county following a competitive bid process using standards comparable to more stringent than those of the city. And whereas NZI Construction Corporation has submitted a proposal attached here as Exhibit A for the parking lot resurfacing and related improvement at the municipal building, which will not involve the construction of sidewalks, driveway aprons, and inlets in the scope of service. And whereas NZI Construction Corporation is willing to extend the terms of its contract with the county to the city and to perform the work within the scope of the work within the scope of work as being most immediately and urgently necessary. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the City of Glen Arden, sitting in regular session this tenth day of May twenty-twenty-one, has determined that the city council approves the award of the contract for parking lot resurfacing and related improvements to NZI Construction Corporation in the amount of seven three thousand three hundred and twenty dollars for the work set forth in Exhibit A, subject to change order amendment or modification in the scope of work as may be permitted by the contract documents and approved by the city based upon the terms and conditions of the county contract and that the mayor be, and the mayor be and it is hereby authorized to sign a a cooperative bid agreement in substantially the form attached heretofore as Exhibit A. And two, that the contract amount shall be payable from the repave from the repaved parking lot at the Municipal Center Capital Outlay Street Paving Line seventy-six fourteen thirty, ten-ten, in the city's annual budget. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption. Is there a motion to accept Resolution R forty-four twenty-two-one into the record?
So move.
Second.
Thank you, gentlemen. Williams was the motion, and Mr. Herring made the second. Is there any discussion?
Council President, I have the same issue on line thirty-one. The job number.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll take the vote. Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
I'm going to vote no because I feel that that seventy-three thousand dollars can go toward another street in Ward Three. Now, we can worry about the city parking lot last, so I'm voting no.
Thank you, Councilman Herring. Councilwoman Smallwood?
I'm passing.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson?
I'm going to abstain from voting on this because I think that we really could have put this money with improving our sidewalks. So I'm going to abstain from voting on this.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wilson. Councilwoman Ferguson?
Yeah.
And Councilwoman Jones, this money was in the budget. It's been sitting in the budget for years. But, and I think we should move forward with items in our budget so we can get some things done in the city. So I'll say yes. Sorry, Councilwoman Smallwood? Councilwoman Smallwood, you pass? Would you like to place your vote? All right, we'll assume that that is a. Once again, Councilwoman Smallwood, you pass? Would you like to cast your vote? All right, that would be a no. We have four yeses, two noes, and one abstain. Resolution R forty-four twenty-two-one passes. And then the next two items. I'm sorry for the noise. Okay, and the next two items were June legislation. All right. Next item on the agenda will be the city manager's report. Mr. George?
Thank you, Council President. Here's a report on Thursday, just a few days ago, so I'm not going to repeat everything. One of the big things I want to point out is we are now interviewing for the open position in Public Works. We have an open tech position, and we're interviewing for that. We had one interview today. It went well. We have another on Tuesday, another on Wednesday. We'll make that decision quickly to get those folks working. The guys are out working really hard doing the grass. The new lawnmowers, as I said on Thursday, are working great. They're really, the guys are enjoying them. We've got, because we are trying to be frugal with our money, we've put one of the old lawnmowers in the shop. We've put several of our chainsaws in the shop so that we can bring those back up to spec and we can begin using those. And we have an equipment cage that we're installing so we can keep all of our equipment secure, and that should be done this week as well. I'm happy to answer any questions on my report or any else in the package you all have questions about.
Does the council have any further questions for Mr. George? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the chief of police's report. Chief O'Donnell?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
The City of Glen Arden has been declared the third safest city in Maryland based on the uniform crime reporting for twenty-twenty. Captain Jackson went to the Frost Community Meeting. We had a homicide on March twenty-ninth. We identified the subject the next day and obtained a warrant. He's currently not in the city. That paperwork's been turned over to the United States Marshal Service. We served a couple of search warrants with the Baltimore City Police Department. I talked to homicide every week about the status of our case. Lieutenant Robertson attended Coffee Club. We assisted the children at both of our elementary schools on the first day of school. We had a planning meeting, all the Maryland Chiefs of Police about the Derek Chauvin trial. There were no incidents. We met with the election board to discuss security. All went well. And we're giving special attention to our Islamic mosque, and that's my report.
Thank you, Chief O'Donnell. Is there any further concerns from the council to Chief O'Donnell?
Madam President.
Councilman Williams?
I have two questions. Chief, you mentioned two of our elementary schools. Don't we have three?
Well, we have the Shabbat School, but they're not operating. So Savania Woods. Savania Woods, that was one school that opened, and Audmore, however, the other elementary school was already open.
To more Glen Arden?
Yes.
All right, so we do have three. I was wondering, we still have three?
Yeah, we have three.
Okay, and the last question is, the homicide, where did the homicide take place?
Took place in the seventy-nine-hundred block of Glen Arden Parkway.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are there any other questions for the chief from the council? All right, hearing none, the city treasurer's report. Mr. George, would you be so kind as to offer that to the citizens and council?
Pull my copy quickly. My apologies, because we don't typically, he's our temporary, and we don't typically ask him to join the meetings. He already had a commitment, so he was not able to join. It's part of the packet, the. Trying to scroll down now. So just under the revenue lines, you can see from through the end of three thirty-one, twenty-twenty-one, the total governmental revenues were four million, three twenty-four, oh forty-two. Expenditures to date are two point nine seven million, so two nine seventy-eight sixty-five for a surplus deficit, a surplus of one, one million, three fifty-three, one seventy-seven. A lot of that, of course, will be payroll that will come out at year end. Since today, cash balances remain sufficient to pay all outstanding bills as they become due. One of the things really not in the report is that the the treasurer and the department, both of the folks in the finance department, all three of them have been doing a very good job in the last several months of taking a look at their policies and their practices and their procedures. They have been reworking a lot of what we're doing to try to become more efficient. We're really working hard to get rid of any late fees, any overdue bills. And the three of them have really done a fantastic job of cleaning that up, and we continue to strive to get everything paid on time every time. And I just want to kind of, good word to Dean, to Shirley, and to Sharon for the hard work they've done in the last month to really kind of take a look at those practices and get them into shape. And I can answer any questions that you all might have.
Thank you, Mr. George. Is there any questions from the council to Mr. George concerning the financial report?
Madam President.
Councilman Williams?
And Mr. George. It was my hope that we would have more real-time accounting. So, and I said that prior to you coming, a former treasurer never did it. As since we are, things are online, that we shouldn't have almost two months delay in our reporting. So when working with the new treasurer, to whomever it is, I think is, you're doing the citizens and the council a disfavor by having almost two-month late reports on real-time money coming in. So I hope that you address that to the persons working. So I hope that you address that to the person working right now, and to whomever be in the future.
Yes, uh, yes, sir. In fact, that's something I've already instructed Dean to do. He, they've been working really hard to get a lot of past, um, entries into the system. Um, I like to see the month-to-date, uh, within a couple of days after the closing of the month, so I can see a real-time view of all of the balances, so we know, uh, where we've got money, where we're running short. Um, if we happen to go over, we know that. But my goal is to have that report to me, uh, within three or four days of the end of every month, and we will certainly make that available, uh, to the council members, so you would see in real-time, uh, the flow of money through our accounts.
Correct, thank you. My last question is, um, anticipation of more money than we anticipated, five point one million dollars, coming from, um, has there been any thought preliminary from the administration where, um, where that money would go, we designated to?
We've, we've had a, a number of conversations. Uh, the five point one-three, uh, the guidance that we've seen so far suggests that that's gonna be more like three point four, three point five. Uh, the, the rule, the preliminary word that came from the Fed was that you would get seventy-five percent of your pre-COVID budget. For us, that would be about four point three million, and you take seventy-five percent of that, which would get us somewhere around three point two, three point three. Uh, the defining, the guidance from the Fed has been really slow to come out. Uh, we're expecting a big tranche of, of data tomorrow, which would be sixty days after the president signed the bill. Um, MML put a little something out late this evening that I have not had a chance to read, but we're expecting to get the guiding literature, because what we have so far is just generic information. You can use it for infrastructure, and you can use it for rent support and help your residents. Uh, but the Fed has been pretty slow to put out specific guiding documents to tell you exactly what you can use the money for, what the reporting requirements will be. Uh, but all indicators, I had a long talk with, uh, MML with, with Tom Reynolds a week or so ago, and all indicators are that the Fed's gonna drop that information out on everybody tomorrow, uh, at which time we'll have a much better idea for exactly where we can use that money and, and to what extent. But we're, we've, I've had several meetings, I've read things from NLC, Brookings, MML, we're, we're reading as much data as we can, uh, in, in anticipation of the Fed giving us true guidelines tomorrow.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Williams. Uh, Councilwoman Eason?
Thank you. Um, next Tuesday, May eighteenth, is the mayor's presentation of the FY twenty-two budget. Who is going to be presenting that budget next week? By the public?
That will most likely be the mayor, um, as long as he, um, through the recovery on his hip surgery, as long as he's able, if, if he is unable to, to do that, I will do that in, in his place.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions from the council to Mr. George concerning the financial, uh, report?
Yes, Madam President.
Councilman Harry?
Uh, yes, Mr. George, I just wanna thank you for that information that you, um, about that over, that over the budget balance and supplies and administration. Um, how so, how soon do you think they're gonna get that reclassed? For next month?
Uh, we're doing, we're, we're, we're gonna sit down with them tomorrow, so in next month's report, it will be reclassified.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there any other questions for Mr. George concerning the financial report? All right, hearing none, we will move now into, uh, citizens' comments, and I would ask everyone to please be considerate of your neighbor. So, citizens' comments, you have five minutes. Are there any, any citizens, okay, um, Mrs. Farid?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you, President Jones. Um, one, I would like to thank you for tabling that, uh, resolution for going on recess to June. Um, also, I have a couple of questions about the runoff election. Um, has there ever been a runoff election in the city?
Yes.
Yes, two thousand thirteen.
Okay. Um, and in the, the charter where it says majority, and I understand you're interpreting that as fifty percent plus one, what happens if the results are fifty-fifty? Do we have to have another runoff?
You'd have to have another runoff if it was fifty-fifty.
Okay. And regarding, um, this is from Mr. George, on the, uh, your city manager's report. When was the Gold Room reopened for events? I noticed that there were some events scheduled for twenty twenty-one.
Well, the, the first event will, if it happens, the, the, uh, the client is, is on the fence and hasn't gotten back. It was the first event will be the end of this month, and then there will be an event or two in June, um, and then there are more planned for, um, I believe, September and November. Currently, our Gold Room coordinator's out on sick leave, but we have been in communication, and we are following the county's protocols in terms of indoor gatherings and the numbers and the, be able to use, uh, the use of uh, buffets versus plated meals, so we're following all the county guidelines on how to do that safely.
Okay, and how were citizens notified, or how can they reserve the Gold Room if they wanted to? I noticed you said clients, so I'm not sure if it's being only rented by businesses, or?
Oh, no, no, when I say clients, I just mean anybody that's, that's a rental customer. Uh, they can reach out to the, to the Gold Room. They just really call the main switchboard at the, at the city, um, on the, the seven seven three twenty-one hundred number, and they can uh, ask to speak to the Gold Room Coordinator, who can talk to them about availability, uh, cost and, and things like that.
Okay. And a question about the webmaster. Does that webmaster have social media experience, and will they be managing any social media pages on behalf of the city?
Yes, they, they're really kind of our digital guru, so they're gonna be doing the website, they're gonna be social media. You know that we started up a, um, an e-list serve. They're gonna be dealing with the email listserv as well. Um, they have, they also have some really good skills in publishing and desktop, uh, building of flyers, so they're really gonna be kind of our, our, our media jack-of-all-trades specialist, and, um, we're hoping to get the final approvals back on that position the next day or two, uh, and be ready for a kind of a June one start.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mrs. Farid. The next, uh, person I saw hand up was, uh, former mayor Elaine Carter.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Uh, Mr. George, of this, uh, individual, um, that you're hiring, will that person have anything to do with our cable station? Um, or is anything being done to reopen the, uh, the cable station?
They will not have direct purview over that, but we, we've received a second quote, um, so we are, we are, we're gonna compare the two quotes that we've received and bring those before the council for selection as to a contractor that can really take the, the cable station to the next level. We, the equipment we have is, is good and it works, but it doesn't allow us to do streaming of the meetings online, um, and it doesn't have the ability to activate the studio, uh, the side studio for, um, studio presentations, so we need to have a few minor upgrades. Uh, we also need to kind of clean that studio up. There's a lot of wires and things that are kind of laying around that need to be tidied up. Um, and we're in the final processes of getting, uh, those refined quotes together so we can review them and then make a recommendation uh, to the council as to which, uh, contractor we think we should go forward with.
Well, excuse me then, I'm, I'm, maybe I'm misunderstanding. So are we talking about two different contracts, contractors? A, a webmaster and a cable station, um, director or, or whatever title you wanna give him, but someone to run our cable station and someone who is going to run our, our website, or are we talking about one position and, uh, one individual, a group of individuals?
Well, we're, uh, two, ma'am. We're talking about, so the, the webmaster will be a full-time, uh, city of Glen Arden employee. Uh, the, the cable station, we're looking to have as a third-party contractor, because you don't really need a TV person in there forty hours a week. Um, so what we're gonna do, like a lot of the other municipalities, um, in the county, have a outside contractor that will come in, and they will run all of our public meetings, so they'll run the, the workshop, the, the regular meeting, the, the public hearing, and any other meetings we need, as well as being able to do TV studio operations if the mayor or wanted to do like a, you know, co, you know, a fireside chat with the residents, something like that. I know Mayor, Mayor Eschies had talked about wanting to do some things like that. They could come in on a contract basis and run those, those video sessions as well. Uh, but I think it's more cost-effective for the city to have an outside contractor do it and not a full-time employee.
Uh, but one last question of, of President Jones, did the council make the decision that they were going with a webmaster versus our cable station? Um, did they get feedback from our citizens that we are not as, is, is interested in our, our, a full-time cable versus a webmaster? Uh, how was that decision made, um, webmaster versus cable station? Thank you.
To answer your question, uh, the webmaster is for the website. Someone will have to upload all of that information and make sure that, that information stays, uh, uh, current. Uh, with the cable station, it's not that, you know, when we had, uh, the former person, he was not a full-time person in the cable station. He was a contractor also. So, uh, with the cable station, you're, like, uh, Mr. George explained, you're not gonna need somebody there forty hours a week. You just need them to come in and do the different things that they did, and that's what happened with the person we had. The webmaster, you need to have them on staff to continuously keep the information on the website current.
Okay, but, uh, what, I'm sorry, I, perhaps I, I missed that in the, the, the budget process, was that, was, is that a new position that was written into the budget process? Or is this something that developed within, uh, the last few months or so?
The webmaster, I think, was presented in the, for the last budget, and, uh, we, we put the webmaster in the budget, but we didn't fund it. So now we're, hopefully, this next budget will fund it, and, uh, in, in the interim of, uh, between, uh, getting it funded, uh, Mr. George has found monies in the administrative budget that he can, uh, move to, uh, suffice with the, to have the webmaster for the next month. If they bring, uh, Mr. George, I think you said the end of the month, uh, end of this month, you were gonna bring in?
But you can't hire anyone until they're, they're, they're put in the, actually put in the budget. Uh, he said something about hiring someone, and yet you're saying, excuse me, that it's not in the budget, that it's anticipated. But you're not going to hire someone and the budget not, and it not be in the budget, are you?
The line item for webmaster is there. Mr. George, would you like to, uh, expound on that for me, please?
Yeah, the, the, the FY twenty-one approved budget has a webmaster position in it. Uh, but for whatever reason, when it was passed, they did not put any funding there, but they did have the position approved by the council, so it is an approved position that can be filled. Um, and we were able to find some money in the administration budget for the last month to move into that line item to fund that salary for, um, for the one month that we'll need it before the twenty-two budget becomes effective.
What will the salary be if it wasn't funded? Who'll determine the salary?
Well, the council determined the salary when it, when they, when they put together the FY twenty-one budget, they put the salary in parentheses behind the name, behind webmaster, so the salary of twenty-five dollars an hour was determined by the council. Uh, but for, I was not around, obviously, but for a reason which I don't understand, uh, we didn't get money in the line item itself, although the line item did declare what the salary would be. So that was set by the council in the approved FY twenty-one budget, and we're simply uh, funding it to the amount that the, um, the council in FY twenty-one, uh, determined.
Thank you. All right, I, I saw, and I, I see two hands. I saw Mr. Montgomery, and then after that, it'll be, uh, Mrs. Cross.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, Council President, you know, my name was mentioned, and my name is usually not mentioned in any meetings. But for the first time, I'm hearing my name meeting, uh, mentioned, um, uh, I guess, uh, concerning the Board of Elections. I have a concern. Now, at the beginning of four years ago, I've, I have, um, in the past, have um, helped pass council members to be elected. I also understand that when I took an oath of being under the Board of Elections, that we, there are stipulations of, uh, concerns that we cannot interact with council members. I have did that. Now, my thing is, I've heard that I have interacted with council members out on the grounds, uh, the municipal building. Now, my thing that I was doing was, I speak to everyone like I always have spoken to everyone. I ask you how you was doing, how's everything, and that's it. Now, this other stuff, I don't know anything about. So I'm addressing that. Now, in the past, four years ago, I'm going back to four years ago, since we want, since we want to use my name, there are conversations in the past, from past, from, uh, our city officials made comments. And I do have those comments. I don't want to make them publicly. And I do have pictures and reactions. I do have those in my phone right here. And when you're using my name, I feel like I need to address these issues. Now, jobs, every, you mentioned, everybody has a job. Of course, everybody has a job. But also, when you tell, when you, um, I'm a little upset right now, so I can't get everything I wanna say right now out. But when you come in for me, I really haven't, I'm, I'm just very emotional about this right now. Now, my thing is, oh, God. You know, everybody has a full-time job, working for federal government and everything else. And I just feel like I'm now being threatened. And I'm gonna have to address this issue and take it further. Now, Mr. Herron mentioned my name, and I'm, I want this be on the record. And he talked about jobs. If your job is so important to you, you need to act in a conduct in a better manner, or we can take it to another level. And that is the threat back to you. If you love your job, your federal government job, or any other job, or taking it seriously.
Point of order, council.
Please, keep, no, no, you, I'm, I, I have the floor. I'm a citizen. I'm talking as a citizen, not as a Board of Election. I never made a comment. I never made a comment on a Zoom meeting.
Point of order, council.
You, uh, Councilwoman Smallwood, Councilwoman Smallwood, please don't do this. Councilwoman Smallwood, don't do this.
Point of order, council.
Councilwoman Smallwood?
I have my five minutes on the floor. Let me finish my five minutes, Miss Smallwood.
Councilwoman Smallwood, please allow the citizen to finish their, uh, statement.
Madam President, you have to recognize her point of order.
Of order. You have to recognize the point of order.
Okay, uh, oh, ca, okay, Councilwoman Smallwood, your point of order is what?
My point of order is that, uh, Mr. Montgomery just personally did a personal attack on a council member, and he threatened him. That's the point of order, and it need to be addressed. It's the council, it's, it's, uh, Mr. Kevin Kepitski still on the line? I would like to, for him to address this.
Yes, I, I'm, I'm still on the line, and the council pres-
Yes, I I'm, I'm still on the line, and the council president is is in charge of running the meetings.
And I've asked.
This citizen just threatened a council member.
Councilwoman Smallwood, please allow the citizen to finish their statement.
No, you.
Mi- Mr. Montgomery, if you could just please. Wrap up. I I understand you're upset, but again, you know, the level of civility in these meetings is unconscionable.
Yes.
Okay, I I I think what, so. You know what, I I I'd rather talk to you, Mr. uh, Pekinsky, uh, and I I I might have to take this to legal grounds. Because I'm 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 talking to you as an attorney, the city attorney. I mean, the ethics committee is not on board. With some of this stuff, we elect these these people in office, and we're still out of order here. And. Things seems to be very unprofessional. And I think we still need to address these issues, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Uh, the next hand I saw was Mrs. uh, Cross.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you to, um, everyone, uh, the citizens that have endured the meeting. Uh, I just have four quick inquiries, and so you did not pass the budget. For the, uh, presumed runoff election. Is that what I understood from the meeting, Council President?
Yes.
So, we've already lost one week waiting for the meeting. That means we'll lose another week. Uh, which means that pushes us into the seventeenth and another meeting. Is that correct, Council President?
Yes, this will have to go to a, uh, the 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 normal process and go to a public hearing.
Could you please account for me the timeline, Council President? What can we expect? Because I'm sitting here as a taxpayer, Council President. Councilmen and women, citizens of Glen Arden. Who have served twenty years in the United States Air Force. To only come to the city of Glen Arden and retire here to choose to retire here. They would have sent me to Hawaii. They would have sent me to Japan. They would have sent me to Mississippi. They would have sent me anywhere. I chose. Glen Arden because I care and love the city on the move. And since I've arrived, we have met nothing but dangerous turns and curves in the road that have taken us back eighty years. I can only imagine that our forefathers, and I said ours, because as a taxpayer, I am Glen Arden. Is flipping in their graves right now for what we have had to endure. The charter of the city of Glen Arden is our laws. And I have just endured a legacy of trouble trying to understand. A charter which our attorney calls archaic. So if the charter is out of order, then what do we have but chaos? It is time for leadership to stand up for Glen Arden. And stop allowing a heritage of rich growth prosperity to fizzle on the vine. Now, the citizens of Glen Arden showed up in mass force, and I applaud them and love them for what they have tried to do. And elect leadership which has vision and strength, not what I've seen tonight. It is imperative that I understand. What the citizens must hear about the upcoming election opportunity. Your mayoral ship is still open for business. Please, what is the calendar dates, Madam President?
Mrs. Cross, I'll have to sit down and look at the calendar, and I, uh, like I said, this, now we'll have to, we've had the first reading tonight. Uh, this will have to go to a public hearing, and probably will come back up again for business if, kind of correct me if I'm wrong, uh. At the next, uh, work session, which will be June, um, seventh, I think, and then the, it'll probably be able to come to the, um. Uh, to be voted on June fourteenth at the next regular meeting.
Okay, so this is. Very disturbing, very disturbing. This is something that I, if I may, is not good stewardship, it's not transparency, and it's not good governance. We have a responsibility. And that responsibility rests in all of us being the best of who we are. That's what we all heard from unity. Unity for Glen Arden, we screamed. And we consistently bring division and strife. I cannot understand what is going on in the city on the move. You have two mayoral candidates here waiting for the date to execute good governance in order. Our god that started this city is not one of dysfunction, but order. If I look at the attorney and all of the advice that he gives. Today, I found a lacking of that. This is something that as citizens, we are asking, have been begging to flip the script on. And stand up for Glen Arden. It is hard, a hard pill we swallow. When I look at the heritage and the legacy that started this wonderful city. That grew it into a municipality where you get to make your own laws, not subjective to the state, and I ask myself. Wonder if it would be better if the state did rule.
Mrs. Cross, your five minutes is now up.
I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
You're welcome. I'm sorry, I saw Mr. Curtis's hand next, and then Mr. Aurora.
Um, so I would first like to, um, apologize to, uh, Dr. or Councilman Williams and Kushi, um, Ms. Cross. Uh, I know how frustrating this must be for both of you who ran good campaigns and is expecting, um, to go to a runoff, which the citizens deserve. Uh, so I do apologize to you because it's, not only is it frustrating, uh, but I have heard different dates. I've heard the fourth, I've heard the second. And I can only imagine if these two candidates went out to spend money with those dates in mind to, um. To highlight those two dates. Now they have to go back, and it's just, it's, it, this is, this is sad. And. I mean, I'm glad Mr. Brown went first, because I would have hated for him to sit through this meeting. Uh, after awarding us five point one million dollars, and then to see that we have no true governance or orderly leadership that can carry out. Handling that type of money. It's embarrassing. Um. I would implore the people who voted against it to reconsider on several points. One, a mail-in, uh, we can take mail-in ballot out, which seems like we all agree. Um, and that, that's fine. Uh, a drop box is a form of in-person voting. It gives everyone the ability to bring their ballot to a drop box and cast their vote. And on Election Day, there were so many elderly people that came by looking for the drop box. And we guided them to the, to the drop box because they wanted a safe place to to cast their vote. They did not want to be in a building enclosed with, you know, possible germs and and COVID. And so it is a form of in-person voting. They get to go, open the box, and drop the box. It is not mail-in. They get to come to the city, um, to the municipal center, by the police station, and drop their vote off. That is in-person voting, just a safer form of it. Um. As councilman, I I I have not taken that oath of office yet, um, but. I understand that you have, you're sworn into office that you would basically look out for the best interests of your citizens. And I don't think that anybody who voted against this, knowing that we're in COVID, are taking the best interests of the citizens at heart. Mr. Herring, I empathize with you. I know that you were disrespected, and it was a double whammy for you to be kicked out of the meeting. I. I'm on board with you. I would have been disrespected as well. But when it comes to you being disrespected and putting the citizens' best, uh, interest at heart. No matter if a door slapped in your face, no matter what, if you were called the name, your oath still remains the same. Ms. Wilson, I've talked to you before, and I know you to be a nice lady who cares about your community. Your oath still remains the same. Ms. Smallwood, I have never, well, the only time I saw you was on Voting Day, uh, but you took the same oath. This is not about who disrespected you or being kicked out of a meeting. This is about what is the best interest of the city of Glen Arden. The residents, eighty percent voted in a form that was not inside of a building. We cannot ignore that. So I would implore the three of you to please reconsider. To please vote yes to allow the citizens to have a voice in this election, as they did have. They just wanna have it again according to our charter with a runoff election. I implore you, please, to change your vote. Um. Set aside your differences, and I just want to promote peace and unity. Because this is sad, this is taxing, and we got to stop. We are one residents, we're one city. We're all neighbors, and we have to to move this city forward in a very professional and neighborly way. Because this, this goes beyond an election. At the end of it, we are still neighbors, we're still residents of Glen Arden. So I I hope that you will promote peace, reconciliation, and that we will move forward with the vote. If we could change it tonight, I I ask that we could change it tonight. Um. I had other things, but I think that's more important than anything else that I had on my, on on, uh, my list of things to talk about, so, um. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. I appreciate your comments. Mr. Montgomery, Aurora Montgomery.
Thank you, Council President. Um. Very well said, Councilman Elet Curtis. And it's unfortunate that my statement has to follow yours. But I'm going to read my statement. Uh, good evening, Council President, Council members and citizens. My name is Richard Arroyo Montgomery, and I am the Chair of the City of the Glen Arden Board of Elections. Needless to say, I am very disappointed by tonight's vote on the ordinance to provide the funding for a mayoral runoff election. However, I want to take this opportunity to go on record and thank every citizen that voted, whether in person on May third. Or prior to, by by mail-in ballot or ballot drop-off at the drop box. Because of you, the city of Glen Arden had its most successful election in the history of the city of Glen Arden. The Board of Elections recorded a record-breaking ballot count of one thousand, one hundred and two ballots. This new Board of Election, which met the minimum requirement of two members from each ward. Worked diligently with no procedures manual and very minimal guidance from former board members. To provide the city of Glen Arden a fair and just election. The Board of Elections provided full transparency to include live streaming of the ballot count. Furthermore, alleged complaints about the Board of Elections to Prince George's County Board of Elections. Are unfounded and therefore untrue as previous, previously mentioned by council members. The city's Board of Elections has been accused of fraud by three council members who technically just voted no. To having a mayoral runoff election as per the city charter states. Was this an act of selfishness, an attempt to sabotage the Board of Elections? Or just simply a lack of concern for our senior citizens while we are still under the midst of a COVID pandemic? I don't think it's hard to figure it out. But regardless of their true intentions, what we do know is that their votes this evening were not in the best interest of the citizens of Glen Arden. What we all have witnessed this evening is the selfish reaction of two council members who did not prevail in this election. And one who only prevailed because he ran uncontested. Unfortunately, this is the sad reality that we as citizens of Glen Arden are forced to endure from a handful of our elected officials. But thanks to your record-breaking votes, the end is very near. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. All right, uh, and I do want to publicly ask. And, um. Okay. I do want to publicly ask Mr. Kepinski, uh, concerning the, um. Resolution for the purpose to allow, uh, for recount of votes after an election, uh. I'm not sure that this is, this resolution, is this something that the the council needs to sit down and come up with a strategy to. Uh, come up with rules for, uh, recount?
Yes, it would have to actually come up with a procedure by which you get a recount. When a recount would be, uh, at no charge, when someone would not be charged if the results were changed. What sort of bonds would need to be posted in the event someone wanted a recount? If it's for a particular limited recount or a full recount of the entire city, there are a variety of things to go into, um. Establishing rules for for recounts, it's an entire procedure.
Okay, so, uh, and then using the, uh, governor's, um, emergency ordinance is, would not, um. Would not be, um, feasible in what we're, what we need to do as far as, um, uh, setting up guidelines for recount.
The governor's or the proclamation deals with the timing of the election and simply, uh, whether you have to follow your. The the means by which you normally hold the election, whether it be in-person. Would just absentee voting, whether it be no excuse or otherwise. It it does not address procedural changes such as a recount.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President.
And I, and as to Ms. Cross's comment, I I sit down with the board and with the council president. We obviously need to come up with a schedule. It was by hope. That the council would have voted today to a a approve the appropriation. So that the election, special election would have occurred within thirty days as required by this, by the charter.
Madam President.
Councilman Herring.
Since I'm, 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 I'm assuming I'm the only candidate that has been a part of the re- a recount initiative in Glen Arden. All of that wasn't necessary. It just simply did a recount because the the war won at that time, it was so close. So all of that, so who paid, who did this, who did that was not necessary. That all of that is about an extra mess. For something as basic of of counting ballots. So I was part of a recount. I was in war one when I first ran for office. So all of that other stuff that was put out there, it didn't, none of that happened. It's just that the citizen, they they felt it was the best thing to do for our election to make sure everybody was comfortable going into the office, so there was no cloud over anybody's head. And that's why they did the recount. And I don't, not understanding what the big issue is with doing a recount. I mean, that's somebody's trying to hide something, so.
Oh, no, I don't have an issue with doing a recount, but the city of Glen Arden doesn't have any procedures in place to do a recount, and and those things need to be developed. That's. That's why we're, that's the question that I'm asking. Because you submitted this resolution. Uh, these are the types of things that myself and citizens need to know as far as what it is that you're, we're trying to do here.
It's in the, it's in the, the, it's in the, it's in there, it's in there for a recount. The state of Maryland allows for a recount. Anybody can ask for a recount as long as you either foot the bill for it or you, um, or or, and if you prevail, then you get your money back, so.
Like I said, I have no, no issue with a- a- anyone asking for a recount at all, but this charter does not clearly define. What we do when a recount is requested.
Then we can do what we want.
No, you can't do.
Yes, you can. If it doesn't define, and the charter says, if it's not addressed in that, addressed in the charter, then we can, we can address it. And that's what I'm doing. I'm addressing it, so. But you don't go ahead and do what you, you wanna hold up, you don't want it, okay, go ahead, but I'm gonna actually, uh, have it in that ordinance now. And that's what I'm doing. I'm addressing it. So, but you don't go ahead and do what you, you want to hold up, you don't want it, okay, go ahead, but I'm gonna actually, uh, have it in that ordinance now. Next time we come up and have it in the ordinance, so. If it's in an ordinance, I'm not gonna support it, so. That's that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr., uh, Council President, I thought that Mr. Um, Herron had put the guidelines in there for a recount.
This is guidelines that he bought from the state, uh, from what I, and, but from what I'm understanding. It was nothing that was set down by the council and, and said, this is where we wanted to go. He has recount procedures, but when I asked him for what, uh, where he, uh, referenced these procedures from, he said they were from the state of Maryland. This is not the city of Glen Arden.
Modified for the city of Glen Arden, so. State of Maryland doesn't offer, doesn't require a lot for a recount. Because any doubt, they, they say you can make a recount. You can have a recount. Call up the guidelines.
I have no problem with anyone asking for a recount, but the city of Glen Arden needs to have, uh, you know, guidelines in the, in the, uh, election procedure as to what they want to do. So, uh, other than that, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Curtis, it is late in the hour. It, um, I'll let you be the last person.
Yeah, my, my only comment is I don't have a problem with the recount. I just think that it should be guidelines and procedures in place, and that should have been shared with candidates so we can have all the information before we, you know, went into the election. I don't think I necessarily, I mean, I don't have a voice in, in the council's saying, but I think it'd be unfair for all the candidates not to know like what is in there, and clearly you guys have what Mr. Herron, uh, submitted to you guys, but all of the candidates who ran in this election, we don't. So we wouldn't know what are the guidelines, you know, what's in there. I, I do think that it takes a little bit more time to review things, uh, hash things out and, and, and put it, you know, implement things. I, I, it just, it just seems a little bit odd to me just to, to rush things through, but like I said, if, if things are in place, I have no, um, problems with the recount. I just think that it should be fair to every candidate to have those procedures and guidelines in place so we know what it is. And it, it's full, that's part of the full transparency, and I think that we're, we're trying to get at.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Very good point. All right, it is now, um.
Council President, Council President.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes, Mr. Wilson was trying to make a comment when you recognized Mr. Curtis.
I didn't, I don't see Mr. Wilson on here.
Can't see him, he's on the phone.
Okay, I didn't hear his voice either.
Uh, he was back there in the bedroom. I could hear his voice.
Well, I didn't hear him.
He kept saying, "Council President."
Did anyone hear his voice? No, so, um.
Are you gonna recognize him now? He has a ca- he has a comment.
Oh, all right, Mr. Wilson, uh, well, I had said Mr. Curtis was gonna be the last person, because I did not hear Mr. Wilson's voice.
But now you know, Mr. Wilson, a citizen, wants to make a comment, Ms. Jones.
All right, we'll let Mr. Wilson make the last comment because he's a citizen. I know. Mr. Wilson, I, I still don't hear him.
Hold on, I'll let him use mine. On, on, on his phone, it's not coming up.
I keep hitting star six and not letting me in. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now, Mr. Wilson.
Okay, my comment is simple, like, for one, this, for me, I've been a citizen of this city for forty-two years, and this is the worst election we ever had. For one, I've, no one, I've been asked my representative, why are we having voted, mailing bo- our ballots going to a post office where the city has an address, for one. Then you got, we don't know who picking up the ballots while they're taking them home. No one can explain to me where the ballots been kept all this time. Is Mr. Montgomery or someone, a boy, typically ballots home, but this shouldn't be, that all should be secured. That's one issue. The other issue is, I'm a senior citizen. I am totally disabled. But I was forced by this election board to come up and purchase and vote. Reason why, when I got my ballot in the middle, it said my full name and left off the words, uh, senior. I have a son living here who's a junior. Now, both envelope is in Leo, so, so Wilson, Harry. Doesn't say senior or junior. If I, if we both had mailed out a ballot, and someone, the broker said, you know what? We apparently sent a ballot twice to the same person. But when I came up to vote, it took a moment, about five to six minutes just to locate the card. That's how incompetent and out, thing without, my, I wasn't properly ordered and, and properly set up. And when she found my card, what did it say on my card? Senior. Or my son, it said junior. These are kind of stuff. And when you got the council president calling the police on Councilman Herron to make him move his table. When, uh, uh, it clearly states you can't be more than fifty feet in front of the buil- uh, uh, to the building, he was a hundred and twenty feet away. But then, and he made, uh, Mr. Williams move his table, which he was more than fifty feet away. But later on, there were several other candidates with upper distance steps. They didn't hit to the government. That was within fifty feet. You didn't hear nothing about that. These are kind of, I'm gonna be blunt with you. This is the, I mean, most of this falls on you, Council President. You keep cherry picking who can talk, who can't. Time after time, you have citizen, this is, this is second time a citizen, also Montgomery, tell Councilwoman Wilson, she can't have a point of order. You know where a citizen called point of order, you stop that citizen from talking, freeze his time and get the point of order. You keep on not doing it. You pick and choose. Just like when a citizen cursed at, at Mr. Herron. He, he wasn't yelling and screaming, he was getting his pointy crook. You should have put that citizen in timeout or in a waiting room. You know what you do? You put a sitting cabinet, my representative, in a waiting room. How dare you? How dare you? If I refer to that citizen as a bitch, then I guess I would be punished.
Counsel, um, Mr..
That's my point.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Your, your five minutes is up.
Five minutes, I mean, it ain't been no five minutes.
It has.
You don't understand what I said, but the point is, attorney, that's what you say. Attorney, back what you say.
Mr. Wilson.
It's okay for, you can pick certain people to say certain things, but some of you wanna hear, then you gonna call them out of order.
Mr. Wilson.
How dare you? You are disgraced.
Point of order, Mr. Wilson.
No point of order.
All right, it is.
Same on you. Have a nice night.
You too. It is now ten twenty-nine.
It ain't fast enough. It ain't fast enough.
Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Kupinski, for your time.